Hello everyone and welcome to our Vampire the Masquerade 5th Edition All Hickata Chronicle Berlin Bloodlines. This is our second special in-between seasons episode, terrifying play. So let's meet our terrifying vampires, starting for this special with Ramos.
Hello everyone, uh, my name is Gilbert Ramos. I am, uh, I am panicked. Um, I'll be playing Dr. Tulio Giovanni. Uh, that's all I got for now.
You're so not used to going first that I totally-
I am not.
I just rocked your world. Luna?
Hello, I'm Luna or Druid By Night. You can find me at Druid By Night on all the social medias, including on Twitch. But tonight I will be playing Imogen Lamia, best cult leader.
Luna is unflappable. Can't face her. Az?
Hello, I'm Az or Az I was on the social media because I think I'm funny and I will be playing the delicious delightful. Diablo-rist? No, there's another one in there. God, it's been so long. Devious delightful delicious Diablo-rist Adelaide Nagaraja.
Very good. Uh, sweetest bean of the coterie officially.
Has never done anything wrong multiple times tonight.
And last but not least, Avery.
Hello everyone, it's me Avery at AveryDeBoy on all the social media programs. I style myself as something of an internet personality and coming back swinging. As unsere genetische Heer Edgar White.
We'll see how swinging you are tonight. Uh, I'm Hadi. I'm storyteller of many things, but most pertinently tonight of Berlin Bloodlines. As always, this is a Vampire the Masquerade 5th Edition actual play. We've gone over our safety and consent, but please check in with yourselves as your well-being is important to all of us who are playing. All the content warnings for this game will be down in the description below. So if you all are ready, las uns anfangen, let us begin. And let's return to Berlin four nights after the Sabbat attack on the Bahari Manor. We open our scene tonight with you, Adelaide. Inside the sumptuously decorated room you sometimes frequent at the Bahari Manor, you're in the now fully healed arms of your paramour, Kasim Batama. One rouse check, please.
Everything's gonna be so fine about these rouse checks now.
You did great last time.
I get hungry.
Okay, this puts you at two hunger, I believe?
Yes.
Not too bad. Just a little, need a little something, something. Kasim's here. Um, last night you intended along with Edgar and Maria to speak with your cousin, now your cousin, not your uncle, Akua at his hooka bar or shisha bar, as we say here in Germany. But you were sidetracked by a call from your Nosferatu contact in the Camarilla, Heidi, who called you to her haven to discuss something that strikes fear in the heart of most kindred, lupines. Camarilla ghouls torn limb from limb outside of mo- outside of Baccane, led by none other than a thin blood named Renata, a name you have heard whispered by other thin bloods, as well as knowing she is an enemy of Sahira, as she has resisted falling under Sahira's thrall. How she's resisted that, you don't know, but having werewolves as allies might be a good indicator. But now you spend a few peaceful moments with Kasim, healed as much as he ever is. Both his eyes are restored, as well as his arm. As he stares down at you, his gaze full of affection, desire and concern. One hand strokes your shoulder as he says, "I, I don't want to pry Adelaide and as much as I appreciate my questions being silenced by your touch, your thoughts are as loud as thunder behind those eyes."
She's kind of like trailing her fingers across his face.
I, I worry Kasim that, that alley has been one of the bane of our existence. But it is, it is the witch's domain, so.
Yes.
I've never had to deal with werewolves before. It's new. I don't like new.
I assume that my brother or Ibrahim never told you about lupines or? Did he?
He mentioned their existence and that if I tried to sneak out of the house while he was asleep, one would eat me.
Yes, of course. Um, in the Ashira, we had a entire, let's call it division, dedicated to hunting lupines. Only the bravest of kindred would dare to be part of it. And bringing back their heads was cause for great celebration.
Have you ever killed a werewolf?
No. Sahira has though.
Of course, yes.
There was a time early in our unlife when I was the, let's call it vizier, and she was the warrior.
You took a different path and I think it was better for you.
I think ultimately it was for me. Not for her.
I think Sahira let so much of what the family did consume her that there's very little left of what she could have been. It's all hate.
Therefore she needs to be eliminated, but it has become quite obvious that I can't do it on my own, not out of a lack of strength. Out of a lack of conviction, I'm afraid.
Adelaide's gonna cradle his face in her hands and kiss his forehead.
We'll take care of her together. You shouldn't have to kill your siblings. Our family did that enough.
He, as you cradle his face, his, oh god, of course, his eyes, you can't help it, huh, looks hungrily at your wrist.
Are you hungry, my love?
Increasingly, it seems in your presence.
You know it's mutual, right? I just don't want to hurt you.
Do you want it to be mutual, Adelaide?
Is that something you want? You ask for very little.
I want what you want. And I will take nothing that you will not offer. And give nothing that you will not take.
She's going to lift her wrist up to his mouth.
He hesitates for a moment before biting in. And he takes your nail? And holds it against his wrist, but does not strike himself with it. And he says, "Do you want it?"
She's going to lift where he's hovering her nail above his wrist and kiss it and then plunge her nail in.
He holds it up to your mouth.
And she'll drink.
Alright. You drink. I assume you take one or do you take all of it?
One, just one, just one.
It gives him no pleasure, at least no physical pleasure that you can see on his face. However, as you drink his blood, which is very similar to what Ibrahim's tasted like. However, there is a strange magic to his blood that it does not feel quite as dangerous as Ibrahim's. However, when he bites into your wrist, of course, that pleasure floods your brain entirely. The taste of his blood leaves your mind suddenly. And all you can think about is Kasim. All you can think about is giving all of yourself over to him entirely. You would let him as well. It's very dangerous doing this with a Bano Hakim, but with six-
It is!
What, six successes? He is not going to Diablo-raise you. As you spend some time with Kasim, bloodletting in the Bahari Manor, um, the perfect place to be doing it. We are going to move our scene down to Imogen. Three rouse checks, please, Imogen.
Okay, success, failure, and success.
Okay, so that puts you at what, two hunger?
Yep, two.
Perfect. Imogen, right now you are standing in a dimly lit training hall. The walls are lined with wooden racks holding various bleated weapons. In the center of the room, two women face each other, Bella, Adelaide's school, and your Bahari sister Hannah. Their sharp weapons glinting in the low light of, uh, from the lanterns hanging above. Hannah, who is a Katif, as you remember, uh, is tall and lithe, wields a slender curved sword with precision. Her hair is tied back in a tight braid and she moves with cat-like grace. Bella, who is slightly shorter and far less confident, holds twin daggers, her stance unsure but aggressive. Imogen, you watch them with sharp discerning eyes, uh, your posture straight, your hands clasped behind your back. And as they begin to spar, your eyes track their every movement, missing nothing. They circle each other slowly at first, testing the air between them. Then with a sudden flash of speed, Hannah lunges, her sword slicing through the air. Uh, Bella with her daggers meets the attack, surprisingly, with a quick deflective motion. Uh, but the battle doesn't last long as Hannah sweeps Bella easily off her feet with a low kick and holds the curved sword to her throat. "Your footwork," Hannah says, "you're too rigid." And then Hannah looks at you, realizing she should let you correct Bella. And she backs away from her opponent, bows her head and drops the sword to her side.
Oh, nod to Hannah and then, um, look over to Bella, say decent parry, but yes, need to be more fluid.
I'm never gonna get the hang of this. If, if mom would just make me into a vampire, I'd be a lot faster and stronger and quicker.
Do you think that's the answer? Just a quick fix?
It's not a quick fix. It's forever, isn't it? When I'm supposed to languish here halfway between life and death forever?
Bella, it's, you may think it's a gift, but trust me, I think whenever it happens, you'll long for the days when you were getting swept and learning is mortal.
I'm as old as Edgar. And I look way older than him. I've been around long enough to know what I want. I know I'm in the body of like a 35-year-old, but how long is mama gonna keep me like this?
As long as it needs to be. Need to prepare. Up.
She stands up.
Again.
Hannah comes over and taps her sword, silently requesting Bella to pick up her daggers. Bella sort of sighs, sort of tries to shake it off, and they begin sparring again. It is then that your sister Philippa comes into the training room and comes up behind your ear. And she says, "Maza, can we speak?"
Keep going. Yes, of course.
Sort of guides you to just outside of the training room. And she says, "Maza, I know it's only been a few days since the attack, but should we not, as a unit, go and enact our revenge for the slight on our family?"
Oh, we will. But no, we need to bide our time. That's what she's expecting.
Some of the others are whispering. They are starting to question your ability to lead.
Uh, who?
Is that a command, mother, that I must tell you who?
It's not, but I would appreciate it as your mother.
Shannon, I have heard Tiara saying some unkind things. Rodeca?
Okay, then what do you think?
I think that we have not had a chance to mourn mother. And I think if we had a proper ceremony for her passing, it would, and a consecration of your new position, it would help cement your leadership.
Yes, we should gather. And we should speak about Hannah Lorry.
I, I am loyal to the Bahari and to whoever the Dark Mother chooses as our leader. And if that is you, then I am loyal to you.
I would do everything I can to lead to the best of my ability, as the Dark Mother has charged me to do.
And also I think some of the girls are missing the orgies.
Oh, it's been four days, four nights, we'll get there.
That's what I said. We're gonna move over to Tulio. Hi Tulio. Three rouse checks, please. Everyone's doing really good on the rouse checks. Don't let me down.
All successes.
All successes, there we go. Uh, Edgar needs to fuck it up now. Um, uh, Tulio, inside your haven in the Mitte, not in the Bahari Manor, uh, you spent your day sleep here in the hopes that Kenneth would finally make his way back home. But it's been enough nights of him being missing now that the inevitable might actually be true. He might not just not be on a bender, he might not just be fucking up somewhere. Uh, he might actually have met his final death at the Bahari Manor and his body might simply be lost in the shuffle of feeding the corpses to the cannibalistic plants. I need to know, one, where Tulio's heads at about Kenneth? Where he, if he actually thinks he's alive or not, or if he thinks he's a lost cause? And I need to know what your plan is to attempt to find him.
Tulio is, uh, is very much quietly worried, um, kind of internal, um, doesn't want to speak out via the worst case scenario, lest it like be spoken into being, um, he likes Kenneth despite it all. He thinks that he does have potential. And whether or not Edgar still cares about him, uh, it's also a promise he made to Edgar to keep after him. So and he's, he's, uh, sort of probably pacing at this point, having been, um, chain smoking the, uh, the, uh, the clove cigarettes and kind of going over where to go next. I think that his first order of business would be to visit the Bahari and see if, uh, they might have seen hide nor hair of him or, God forbid, fed him to the plants.
So speaking of Edgar, as you've mentioned Edgar multiple times, you and Edgar now living in the same part of the city, do you stop to go get Edgar?
Absolutely. Um, uh, yes, and then my brother is always, uh, a welcome ear for trials and tribulations and wants and worries.
Um, and of course there are things you need to discuss with him as well. Eventually you need to all get together. Uh, it's been a rough couple of nights here in Berlin. For everyone, I'm sure. Um, so do you take anything from your apartment or do you just, it is a s- a very short walk over to Edgar's maisonette apartment?
Uh, just the sticks of charcoal and then I think maybe grabbing one of the skulls from the ritual, after the ceremony, I should say.
We need to ask, you taking little Edgar with you or are you leaving him in your apartment?
He's gonna be by my side always.
Okay, is he in your hair? Is he on your back or is he?
Wherever he'd like to be.
Oh, he likes your hair.
To grant him, yeah, try to grant him a little more freedom than, uh, than he was used to.
Did you bring him any exotic fruits as he requested?
Absolutely. Uh, now that I know Donna is not his preferred-
Donna, yeah, no. Now that you know that he's, uh, not, not a carnivore?
Absolutely.
Yeah, let's say you brought him, uh, he has a papaya that, that he's eating on in your hair. So you take little Edgar and his papaya and your charcoal, a short distance down to Edgar's maisonette apartment, which is just in a little bit nicer part than where you live. And Edgar, inside of that apartment, um, your whole flat, this, uh, maisonette, uh, is an open, uh, what do you call it? An open plan living space, um, with large floor-to-ceiling windows to allow natural light to fill the room. Now that's not ideal for kindred, right? And as you never expected to spend much more than a night here in an emergency capacity, um, heavy drapes are an easy solution to the problem. But as you awake, and we're sort of going back in time a little bit, because Edgar, you do wake an hour before sun- sunset. Um, as you awake, something is wrong. One rouse check, please.
Success.
Success. You're at one hunger. You've been with Aelyn for over a decade now. Um, she's belonged to you in vampire society long enough that she knows the ins and outs of your routine and how to protect vampires during the day, right? However, as you awake and move your hand to reach in the bed for where she should be, uh, or might be, um, you stick it right into a ray of sunlight. Uh, please take a point of aggravated damage.
Great. Uh, absolute and utter fear. Um, I think Edgar rolls out of the bed and like scrambles in the corner, uh, very much like, like frightened animal. And just begins to take stock of the situation.
Yes, she didn't secure the drapes. The drapes are closed for the most part, but she didn't secure them, meaning that there's always that slit that where the window meets the wall. That was open.
Aelyn?
There's no answer.
Traced. Tiptoe around the light. Checking the next room, like just peeking his head out in the hallway.
In the next room, again, sort of bedroom, a living room, a half kitchenette, if you like to call it, and that is the entire apartment. Um, Aelyn is curled up in the armchair of the living room. Um, she's wrapped in a blanket. A full cup of tea that was once warm is sitting on the end table next to her and the teabag is still in it, uh, which is a no-no here in Europe. And, uh, an equally cold bowl of milchreis, which is typically a hot rice pudding, is also sitting untouched next to it. Uh, she's fast asleep and it sounds like she's murmuring to herself. She sounds like she's having a nightmare.
Walk over to her and just run his fingers through her hair. Yet asleep. Aelyn, wake up.
She does eventually open her eyes and she looks exhausted.
What's wrong?
Um, I just, I don't know, I fell asleep. Do I smell something? Are you making bacon?
No, I burnt myself on the sun.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I forgot. I forgot to tie the drapes.
I've been through worse.
I'm sorry Edgar, I'm just very tired.
It's fine. I'm just very glad you didn't, you didn't see me after I blew up Olivia's car with the two of us inside.
No. Did you look like, uh, out of a cartoon?
Worse. It's more like The Walking Dead, you know?
I don't like zombies, mo zombie movies. Unsettling.
And that's why I love you most of all.
She looks over at her food. I don't even remember making this.
You need to rest. We need to go home.
Okay.
We've been here for four nights, I think. I'm adequately in touch with the people who live here. I'd like to go home.
You want to go home tonight?
Feel like it.
I have to wait for the sun to go down, but it should be going down soon. You slept in a little bit.
Hey, I need the sun to go down. I need to do, uh, I need to do a ritual.
I'll go shower, pack my things.
Leave that silver mirror out if you don't mind.
Of course, you are vain. We have lots of mirrors.
It's, no, it's for the ritual. I needed to, I needed to know whether or not Kenneth is dead.
I, I don't understand how your magic works. You need items to do yours. It doesn't come from desire.
No, no, it does not.
Strange.
What I do is a pale shadow of what you do. As I am a pale shadow of what you are.
I, I don't have the energy to recite poetry at you tonight Edgar, I'm sorry. Ever since you took the necklace, I feel so tired and weak.
Sorry.
I know you're doing it so I won't become something you are afraid of.
My fear has no bearing on it. I just don't want to lose you.
She sort of pats you on the face. She heads towards the bathroom. Something Berlin is afraid of, though.
That seems to fit.
She sort of takes the silver mirror and puts it out onto the chair that she was just sitting on.
Go ahead, do your little ritual.
I need the night sky. Can't do it while the sun's up.
She takes your hand.
And she says, "Well, then you can help me wash."
And she smiles.
You, you've never had to ask me twice.
She pulls you into the bathroom. I'm gonna fast forward a little bit in time to Tulio, when the sun is down. Heading out just after waking up, not hungry, too concerned about Kenneth this evening. The last rays of the sun are down and you bust out of there with, uh, little Edgar on your head and walk right over to Edgar's apartment. You don't need to knock, you know exactly where it is now. Head up the stairs. And do you go in? Or are you polite?
I, I'm definitely polite, as I think I might have in the first few nights, having visited Edgar with him being in this vicinity. May have walked in on some things I wasn't supposed to.
So Edgar, you're clean and shaven, if you shave, um, dressed, Aelyn is dressed, she's getting her stuff together. And, uh, you're beginning your ritual. And you hear a knock at the door before you can really get it going.
Edgar will straighten his tie, go to the door. Open the slot. Right, shut it and click, 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 click. Open the door. Come in.
Really, you'd have more, with just a bank vault with the amount of locks you have on the door, brother.
I got bored.
Your brother smells of fruit.
And a mango.
Papaya.
Alright. New hair product or?
I'm, yes, allow me to introduce you, well, reintroduce you. New hair product, say hello Edgar, be polite.
Hello Edgar.
Little Edgar, who you cannot understand, says to you Tulio, "Nah, this is the one Luisa told me about. I don't like him."
That's entirely fair. He'll grow on you, maybe.
I certainly hope not.
Well, I'm a bit in the middle of figuring out if our son is alive. Care to join me?
Retoitus, that's exactly what I came to you about. I was hoping that, uh, you would accompany me to the Bahari Manor.
Of course. Uh, I mean, I can save this ritual until we're there or I can do it now.
It's entirely up to you. And what is the ritual? Define where he is, if he's alive, dead.
It won't tell us where he is, but it'll tell us if he's alive or not. And a general inclination as to the trajectory of his desire.
I can wait. I can be patient. By all means, do your ritual.
And Edgar will begin astromancy.
I need to get Kenneth's sheet out real quick. Um, yes, you mold me intelligence of blood sorcery and I, even though the rules say you can't, I don't care what the rules say. You can add two extra dice with ritual because you would know both his birth date and you would know his embrace date, because you were there for both.
Yes.
You weren't there for his birth- You weren't there for his birth date, but you were there for his christening, you know, was.
Hunger is one.
Tulio will visit with Aelyn if she's still awake, just to.
She is. She is currently gathering things and can you roll me, um, and in a wits and medicine roll, please? Perfect.
I absolutely can.
I heard a rumor that Tulio was a doctor.
Yeah, me too.
Uh, be five successes.
Five successes. Um, Aelyn doesn't look very well, um, which is strange. As far as you're aware, not that anyone's really talked to you about it, but you're a pretty intelligent person. Edgar has talked to you, this, this necklace, whatever it is, healed Aelyn. Uh, she's not wearing it currently and she looks, um, not that she looks like as bad as she did that night that you went to the, um, Bahari party. Um, she's, looks a little sallow. She looks a little under the weather. She's got bags under her eyes. She doesn't look super great.
Sister dear, are you feeling alright?
Um, no, I'm, I'm, I'm alright, I think. I'm just, I feel very tired. I can't remember if I've eaten today. I keep falling asleep.
Best to feel your stomach, even if you don't recall, just have a little something. Have you had water today?
Maybe. I can't really remember.
We'll get you some.
And little Edgar in your hair sort of bumps against your skull and hands you a piece of papaya.
Hand a piece of papaya to Aelyn.
She looks at it and she sees that there are bites taken out of it. I, I, I'm not that hungry.
I'll prepare you something fresh. Now we'll go to the kitchen and doting on my sister.
Um, yeah. Make me a wits and craft roll.
Oh shit.
We'll see what you prepare. Nine successes. Alright, well, I also need a rouse check for that. Did you give me a rouse check?
Success.
Okay, well. It doesn't give you location or whereabouts of a person, however, um, Kenneth's highest skill is survival. Um, Kenneth's highest attribute, um, is charisma. Uh, what else does it tell you? Uh, his desire. Uh, Kenneth?
I do have a crit in there as well and I know that matters.
Uh, yeah, Kenneth's, yeah, it did, Kenneth, yes, because desire and conviction. Uh, Kenneth's desire is to make something of himself. Um, his conviction is that no one may control me. And his emotional state at this very moment is panicked.
Edgar will.
So he's at least not dead.
Walks to the, to the kitchen.
In the kitchen, you see that Tulio is preparing food. What are you preparing Tulio? How many successes did you roll?
Three successes.
Three successes. Alright, well, that's not terrible. Um, you look through the fridge to see if you can figure out something that you can cook and in the fridge you see that Aelyn had pre-prepared herself something, but never made it. It's something we hear in Germany called malatashen. Uh, it is sort of German dumplings. And, uh, you put those, they're very easy to make and you put those in a frying pan and you're frying them up for her. And, uh, you remember to use oil and salt and pepper and paprika, Germans' favorite spice. Um, and, uh, yeah, that's what you walk into Edgar. It smells terrible. Tulio smells awful.
It's fine. It doesn't smell, it's not for me and it's better than the paprika flavored chips that are probably in the cupboard.
Alright, I'm not sure what I just walked into, but, um, Kenneth's alive, he's freaking out, but he's alive.
I seem to recall that's his constant state of being. It's either that or sarcasm. It's a matter of, hmm, what the situation is, which side we get.
The more you try to control him, the more he's going to implode. So if you want him to look good on you, maybe soft borders.
We've had that discussion, actually. We've, uh, come to the agreement that I, that you might find this foolish. We won't be blood bonding him.
Good. Think that'll go a long way to earn his trust?
We'll see. Stipulation being the moment he does something drastically fucked up, that he will be bonded to me for a long time, as well as left stake to the box.
We should go. I'd like to talk to you about something in the car.
Let me just plate this for Aelyn and then I'll be.
Leech, Christ Tulio, come on.
Bedside manner and I'll dump it. I'll just flip it and dump it onto a plate and no, no presentation.
This motherfucker.
When you leave the room and go back into the main room, um, Aelyn has fallen asleep again.
I think she's ill Tulio.
I think so.
And she only gets better with the necklace. And when she wears the necklace, she sees dead men and brings them back to life.
I miss the days when illnesses could be cured with antibiotics and Nyquil.
You know, they were still giving out cocaine to schizophrenics when I was a lad.
Those were the days.
I, I don't, I, I don't think those were the days Tulio. Um, and he'll just take the dish over to Aelyn, wake her up.
She wakes up, um, but very like shocked that she had fallen asleep, didn't remember. She still has her bag in her hand, uh, that is not zipped yet.
And she says, um, are we leaving?
Where do you go when you dream?
A place very bad. Uh, everything is good gray and dead. Uh, there's no sun, no sky.
Giant storm on the horizon, perhaps?
Yes, but it's strong colors. It's black and green and lightning inside the clouds. Glass swirling amongst it.
Edgar will just look over to Tulio. Um, Tulio and I have some errands to run. When I come home, we'll go home.
Edgar, I don't think it's a very good idea that I be left alone. I'm, clearly I'm turning into an, no, that's not the right words. I don't know the words. Um, schlaf eingang.
Narcoleptic.
Yes.
Alright.
Perhaps we could get me some coffee?
Sure. Yeah, there's that, um, there's that Turkish place to know that you like.
Yes, and I'll take the malatashen to go.
Yeah.
We'll find you a top war.
I won't, I won't interrupt your vampire business, I promise.
Alright.
And she zips up her bag and she starts walking out. And you all get the impression that she is very concerned about what's happening to her.
Edgar's just running his fingers over the necklace that's still in his pocket.
What are the dangers Edgar?
She loses, she loses control of herself. She starts doing too much.
As opposed to this, where she withers.
She's still her, at the very least. She smacked an entire language into Maria's head. Without trying.
Maria could, Maria could deal with some culture.
It's neither here nor there.
Look, it's something to cheat.
There are things that I need to discuss with everyone at the same time because I have neither heart to see them twice.
Let's be on the way then. It's just something that I think you should keep in mind that there are choices to be made. With every medical emergency, there is a, an emergency contact and unfortunately Edgar, that falls to you.
Edgar kind of like looked down the stairs, make sure Aelyn's kind of out of earshot.
She is, but she is struggling getting down those stairs. She's like she's having vertigo.
I might need your help getting rid of a body.
That is one of my specialties.
Wonderful. It would need to stay between the two of us.
No one can.
Great. Let's go.
So Tulio walked here, so you have Edgar's car that you need to take. As you travel to Steglitz Zeelandorf, do have a perfectly good garden for that. As you travel to Steglitz Zeelandorf, to the Bahari Manor, we're gonna check in on Adelaide and Imogen. Adelaide, you've spent your time with Kasim and Kasim is close to you. Not clinging on to you, not here in public, uh, but is walking very close to you and stands significantly taller than you. And you are searching for Bella and, uh, you come across the training room, uh, where you see Bella is training in there and Imogen watching very carefully, instructor. Can I ask Imogen, when you're in the training room, do you change clothes? Do you wear your very typical sort of, you know, your, your black dress, typical Bahari garb, or do you wear something more sporty in the training room?
I think Imogen has kind of traded in for this, uh, type of environment, has traded in the dresses for like something like a jumper or something flowing, but with pants, something Hannah Laurie would wear.
Perfect, yes, Hannah Laurie was always wearing a very, uh, colorful jumper. Um, black, of course, yes. Hannah Laurie usually switched between reds and browns, but yes, or greens. Um, as you enter into the training room, you can see Bella is sweating, her hair sticking to her face. She's really, Imogen's really working her hard and of course, vampires don't breathe and don't really need to rest, not in that way, but Bella definitely looks like she needs a rest, but you don't see Hannah or Imogen making any indication to let her rest. And once again, Hannah sort of kicks her right in the chest and Bella goes flying into the wall.
Need to anticipate the, honestly Hannah, you could see that coming from a mile away.
It's your call, mother. How many nights we are going to do this before? I know, is, what is the saying? You can only do something so many times over and over again before it's the definition of a crazy person.
Insanity. Yes.
Should I leave you alone, mother?
Take five.
Of course.
And she puts the sword exactly where it's supposed to go on the wall and exits out through the back.
Hello Adelaide, Kasim.
Imogen. How is Bella faring with her training?
And Adelaide's keeping eyes on Bella now that they're taking a five minute break.
Bella is winded. She's just laying on the mat.
It's going about as well as expected.
Kasim puts his arms on your shoulders, Adelaide, and says, the Bahari are the most skilled in fighting. I dare say outside of my own clan. She's in good hands.
That's why I asked Imogen to train there. Only the best.
Train her, I will. But she's impatient. And I think you know what for.
Yes.
And I told her this not my call and that she needs to wait, but to, until she's prepared.
It's not going to fix anything.
And Adelaide is going to walk over to Bella.
Bella is laying there, breathing very heavily. She's got her arm over her diaphragm, as if she can't get enough air.
I think you're breathing too quickly. Uh, something about measured breaths. I don't know. I read it in one of the magazines Tulio gave me.
Arms up.
There are very few moments where you remember that Kenneth and Bella are siblings. And Bella very sarcastically says, how about I just stop breathing altogether?
It passed out.
Very funny.
Ella's gonna kind of bend down and try and help her to her feet.
She sits up, but she doesn't want to stand up right now, so she just sort of puts her head on her knees.
It takes time. We probably should have started this sooner.
Yeah, well. Crazy thing is, is like, I don't know, 10 years ago, I thought I was gonna be a Nagaraja, but I'm not, so.
And you still would have been doing this.
Well, I'd have a little bit more of a boost. Wouldn't have to rely totally on bladed weapons. When am I gonna ever have to use a bladed weapon? I think if Sekura came here right now, that I'd be able to take her with two daggers.
No.
So what is this for? Unless you're going to give me over to Imogen and have her embrace me.
No. That's not. You can have as much of something as you want. But want and need are two separate things, my love. They are not the same. And you can have something and not know what to do with it. Power without technique is sloppy and it will get you killed.
Then you pick up a sword.
I don't fight the same way.
And neither would I if I was like you. She stands up and she says, and looks to Imogen, may I take a shower?
Of course.
And she does not put the daggers back. She drops them to the mat.
And that is why I hesitate.
Go, we're gonna pick them up. And set them on the wall. I worry about her.
She is much better than she was. But her impatience end. What, what is the word? Um, desire?
Call it desire.
Drives her.
I don't remember what that was like.
I don't.
Kasim very hesitantly, as he never wants to speak for you, looks to you and looks to Imogen and says, I believe that it is no one here in this room's desire for Bella to be made kindred, although I could be wrong.
It's not my call.
Is it your desire? Do you see her as someone befitting the Bahari?
The dark mother is always looking for more, more daughters.
It's not what I asked.
Want then need again.
I don't know what the solution is, outside of something that would be considered unethical.
I wasn't ever taught ethics, so if you would. That was a joke, that I need to make that clear.
Like staring at Imogen and knowing that there's a code in the Bahari. She, she laughs, she chuckles.
There are blood rituals that I could do to remove her desire for such a thing, remove her wants, remove many things.
I don't think that's a solution. And she's like, whoa, I should, I spoke too fast, I'm so sorry.
It's not my call.
No, it's mine.
It is. But you can't leave her dangling forever. She will find someone who will do it.
And she won't be her anymore.
And I don't think any of us in this room want that.
I saved her so she could have a life.
Yes, my love, but her life is in the dark. And yet not part of it. And it is not a life.
You're right. I hate that. I don't like knowing that there's an end and not a solution. And killing her desire.
On another night, when she is more amiable, we can talk about solutions. None of them are ethical, as I said. But I do have them.
I know. I thought about talking to my contacts about it.
Don't, don't, don't talk to Heidi about it, because Heidi is always willing, always wanting to do that.
No, not, no, no, no. Heidi and I talked about that, and, no, no. Especially after what she did to her sire.
You should see what she's done to her child, or especially Mads. She ruined that poor boy.
Eh, yes.
Edgar and Tulio, as you are driving to the manor, do you want to have this conversation in the car? Do you want to have this conversation in the manor? And Aelyn has once again fallen asleep in the back.
Once Aelyn falls asleep, Edgar will turn the music down. Look over to Tulio. Catherine's a problem.
In what way?
The stealing of my credit card, I don't mind. It's murdering someone in the room that they rented under my name. That's the problem. The subsequent problem being, my lovely wife with the necklace saw the dead man and raised him from the dead.
I was unaware that it was in the face. Purchased with your card, Edgar.
Well, I mean, I've taken care of it. It's done. I'm gonna ghoul the lad that got brought back from the dead. So, you know, it'll be fine. The body. If it comes to it, I have agreed that I will embrace Catherine. There are always those unfortunate accidents that happen during the embrace, you understand?
Of course, but who has agreed? Even Maria?
Catherine.
And what does our new Pope have to say about that?
Precious little they would air in front of me.
This could be a problem, Edgar.
I anticipated being a problem. It's just how much of a problem is it going to be? If she takes the embrace and runs off, never to be seen again. Maria will look for her. And so if that is the way it happens, then we need it airtight that she went somewhere. I don't like that option. It feels a little bit too much like something Mother would put forth. I don't have to kill Maria either.
I don't think it will come to that. I think that for all all the flaws that Maria carries, I think she could be made to see reason. I agree Catherine is a problem, especially if this is going to become the norm. But love does things to people. Edgar, you know this.
Yes, I do.
So with Catherine being a problem, I doubt Maria will be in support of our actions. She won't. She'll, she's blind to Catherine's flaws.
I don't think she is. I think she sees them and debates them.
That's even worse.
I am just worried about the reaction if the embrace doesn't take.
Things happen.
It's not just Maria that I'm worried about. Catherine and I have been close for a very long time. We saved each other, in a way. But she's become something that I can't allow to live.
As you say that, can I get an Intelligence and Academics roll from both of you, please? So you're almost at the Bahari Manor. I don't know if Edgar has thoughts in academics.
I do, with a specialty in macroeconomics, but I doubt.
No, that's. No.
I don't suppose a research specialty would help me out either, huh?
A, a what specialty?
Research.
A lot.
Zero successes.
Perfect.
Five successes.
Five successes. Well, that's much better. Aelyn is muttering something, but she's not speaking any of the languages that you know that she speaks. She sounds like she's speaking either a Slavic language of some kind. You're not entirely sure which one. But they do stem from one similar branch, so a lot of their words are shared between, like, for example, Russian and Polish. Um, you think she's speaking Polish. That would be your educated guess. And with five successes, she's begging for someone not to hurt her. From what little you can glean. Again, growing, growing up in Germany, you hear a lot of Polish. And you pick out a name, a name that she keeps saying over and over again, Stravka. Stravka. She keeps saying it over and over again, begging whoever Stravka is not to hurt her.
Edgar, I don't suppose you know anyone by that name?
I can run through my contacts, but I doubt it. At least not from this time around the sun.
She is begging not to be hurt. Do we wake her, Edgar?
No. No, not right now.
You both arrive at the Bahari Manor. And Imogen and Adelaide and Kasim, you hear a car pull in. You can't see the lights from where you are. You're deeper into the manor, but you do hear a car. You are Kindred. You do have better hearing than the average person. And you hope that's Tulio. Imogen, do you meet the car yourself? Do you wait for them to approach the building, or do you send one of your daughters out?
Uh, I'll look out the window and double-check that it's Tulio and Edgar.
Well, you'd have to sort of travel outside of the training room to check the window, but if you do do that, then yes, you see that it is at least one of Edgar's cars that you recognize.
No, I'll go outside.
Adelaide, do you follow?
Yeah, Adelaide will follow by Imogen. See who exactly is there.
So you pull in. Imogen greets you at the door. You can at least see her as you pull in. And if you peek past her, you see Adelaide, and even farther back from that, you see the tall, imposing figure of Kasim Batama, the Prince of Berlin, or the de facto prince at the moment.
Hello, dear. Edgar, good evening.
Didn't realize you had company already. You seem.
Mr. White.
There's some things we need to talk about. And with your consent, revered Mother, I only would like to perform a blood sorcery ritual in the house.
What ritual?
I need to look into the past, and I need to know who grabbed Kenneth from here.
Oh.
He's alive.
And then, of course.
Have you found any trace of him yet?
I know that he's panicked. I know that. He's struggling to become the man he's meant to be, and I know he's alive. It's all I know right now.
Kasim sort of cranes his head over to the car. There is a sleeping woman in the back of your car. Is she a sacrifice for the Bahari?
I'm starting to like you, Kasim. Please don't ruin it. That is my wife.
I'm sorry. I wasn't aware you were married.
I will forgive it this once, due to our longstanding friendship. That girl kind of gave him a wink.
He looks to you, Adelaide, and in Arabic says, well, he's gotten quite prickly over the years.
Yes, yes, he has. Just wait. Any sort of slight, and I think the only thing getting picked up would be Aelyn's name.
Edgar speaks Arabic now.
Hell, yeah. I love this.
He'll turn his head over his shoulder, and he'll just say in Arabic, "Go fuck yourself."
Kasim looks.
You left your wife in the car.
Kasim looks delighted. I love to hear someone speaking my mother tongue.
He'll open, open the door and run his fingers through Aelyn's hair again.
She's still drowsy, and as she opens her eyes, she says the name again, Stravka.
We're here? We're at Imogen's home again?
Did I drink my coffee?
No.
Or at the place where everyone wants to eat me?
Please, with me.
She puts her arms around you, and she says, "Edgar, I think I will fall asleep walking."
He'll reach in his pocket and pull the necklace out and hold it out to her.
It's, no, no, I'll be fine. I can walk. And she pushes it away from you.
Alright.
Into the Bahari Manor you all go. Imogen, where would you like to take your coterie plus Kasim? In your home?
Uh, do I remember, I know there's so much that happened, and I was very distracted in the garden in particular. Do I remember the last place I saw Kenneth?
Yes, and for clarification, um, the last place anyone saw Kenneth was in the garden.
No.
For clarification, Edgar, I did mention, in the last session we did, that you attempted this ritual and did not, and it was too chaotic for you to be able to pick Kenneth out of that particular night, that particular timeframe. There was too much going on. There was fire, Sabbat attack, people everywhere, the visions of it. It was too hard to pick him out of what exactly happened. And he eventually leaves the area with no one having taken him. Now, if you'd like to try the ritual again, and if you would roll a significantly high amount of successes, I would maybe help you out here.
I have to at least try.
Sure.
Seven successes.
Nope, you get the same sort of thing you got before. Kenneth sort of looking past the Bahari Manor, outside of the Bahari Manor, through the glass here that is all sort of obscured, where you can't really see through it, but he sees something. Uh, and he leaves through the garden area. And that is as much as you got. But at the very least, you know wherever he is, he's alive or unalive.
Alright.
Is this where you want to have your conversation in the garden, Imogen?
Uh, yeah.
Alright. Well, of course, the garden here is beautiful. Even the cannibalistic plants are beautiful. Flowers are colors of orange and purple and blue. It smells very fragrant and nice out here. There is wrought iron furniture for you to sit on. And I need to know two things. One, is Kasim staying out here with you? And two, is Aelyn staying out here with you?
Edgar would like them both to be present, if that would be acceptable.
Alright, so you can lay Aelyn down on one of the wrought iron benches here, and you all can gather around some of the other ones. Kasim will stand very close to you, Adelaide. And that conversation. Oh, yes, sorry, God.
Yeah, just ensuring Tiny Edgar knows which plants are cannibalistic.
Oh, he's not leaving your hair unless you tell him to, unless you tell him to go do something.
Perfect.
Tulio is starting to smell like rotten fruit.
Have you picked up a new hobby, Tulio, or?
Uh, you could say that, yes.
Alright, you smell terrible.
I think you have mango in your hair right there, and I pick out a piece of fruit.
I've been told it's papaya.
It's papaya, and then I will talk to Tiny Edgar and say, Edgar, what did I say about keeping clean?
Have you ever eaten a papaya? It's full of seeds. I am. I'm eating it, but you know. You got a lot of hair.
Take, take great care, please, Edgar.
I'm doing my best, and that is all I can do.
Right. Seem, my old friend? Girl, hold the necklace in the palm of his hand. Where did you come across this?
I am surprised that you still have it.
I don't part with trinkets of friendship so easily.
Well, that's a rather long and involved story. I assume you have more important things to talk about as a coterie than about some trinket, as you called it.
No, I don't. Please, entertain me.
He looks at you, Adelaide.
We do have important things to discuss, but given that our singer is passed out, I take it she's not doing well.
Your singer? She sings.
Yes, um, remember when you were telling me about the necklace? And you said it was for someone. It's her.
No. Uh, I was told that the necklace was for one of our kind.
Yes.
It would bring someone peace even in on death. I assume it means it's for Kindred.
I think it's a little more complicated than that. And she's just looking at Edgar.
How much detail should I go into, Adelaide?
You probably don't have to tell the whole story. Just who you got it from.
When I was, when I left the Ashira, I was searching for enlightenment, let's call it. Amongst that sect, the faction, there is talks of a group of seven Kindred, of a specific clan that are quite revered and protected. I thought to seek them out. They are known for I think some people used to joke that they were like vampire Jesus, but I could have been misinterpreting that. I'm not good at telling jokes or understanding them.
Didn't take you for a unicorn hunter.
I'm not. Just in that one period of my life. I did find them, guarded by Abayad Mushadit. He had the necklace. When he saw me, he told me that it would offer me peace even in on death. I assumed what he meant was seeking out Zoroastrianism, Ahooramasta, as it is a representative of the god. The one god that binds us all. But they were holding it, keeping it for someone in particular. And before I left, they told me that I would find someone who would ask about it, and that I should give it to them.
What was the year?
Sometime in the late 80s, early 90s. I actually don't remember.
Did you happen to know Kindred by the name of Gael?
I did not. I knew no Kindred in Medina.
Interesting.
I'm from Morocco. Not Saudi Arabia.
Alright.
I feel it incumbent upon me to ask why.
She's a sorcerer. A powerful one at that.
As are we all, although I... she does not seem Kindred as she is asleep.
I'm mage.
She's the real deal. Not this shadow that we do.
I see. She's a willworker.
Yes.
And she's your wife.
She is.
Okay. He looks at you, Adelaide.
Is that gonna be a problem?
If it's not a problem for Adelaide, it's not a problem for me at the moment.
I like Aelyn.
Then I will not harm her.
She's the only one who can destroy, purify the Shadow Bane, Kasim.
Alright.
And we know where it is.
Then why have you not taken her to it or brought it to her?
It will kill her.
I see, then so she is not the person to destroy the Shadow Bane.
I don't take your meaning.
If it kills her, then it's not worth destroying it.
We are pursuing alternative options.
I will support you in that. In whatever capacity I can. I wield a great deal of blood magic myself. Whether that will help you or not, I don't know. I've never laid eyes on it myself.
I'm not sure what to say.
I think perhaps you came in, what is the phrase, Adelaide, hot and heavy, and I held no animosity towards you.
Came in swinging. Which unnecessary.
She seems unwell.
She's dying.
Did she do something else? The last time she was like this, it was because of what she did for you and Tulio?
It's not that. When she wears the necklace, she's fine, but she's not herself. This necklace belonged to Behesh.
So, okay. If we're going back to the conversation we had on the plane with Yancy. Is she herself when she wears the necklace and that's the problem?
She's Behesh when she, she's a step closer to being Behesh when she wears the necklace, and that is the problem.
Thank you for being clear.
So we need to deal with this.
Mm-hmm. We need to deal with the Shadow Bane. Kenneth is still missing. Which, if that is his choice...
No, please, go on. Don't stop.
If he ran and tried to get out, you're going to drag him back?
It's not my choice.
Yes.
I'm kind of, give Tulio a look.
So?
Kenneth and I made a deal. And he has to uphold that end.
Kasim sort of looks at all of you and says, "This seems like coterie business." Um, Imogen, if you don't mind, I'm going to take some of Bella's things that she keeps in the kitchen that doesn't get used, for obvious reasons, and I'm going to attempt to make her some turmeric tea.
Of course.
And he kisses you on the forehead, Adelaide, before leaving.
Do we do anything for Aelyn in this moment, or it's more the spiritual sickness as you talked about before, Tulio?
It's a spiritual sickness. Something to do with the necklace. There's nothing I can do.
She's... I haven't reached out to the lupines yet.
If you don't want to kill your wife, that would be our next best option.
Where are we with handing it to Elsa?
She said she would, what, throw it into the, some vortex in the Shadowlands? Are we sure it won't just come back?
The Tempest.
Tempest.
I am no master of the rites or knowledge of oblivion.
I don't trust it.
Well, that was the thing, as they said, once it's made, it can't really be destroyed, just, um, uh, altered.
There is a third option. We let Aelyn do it?
Yes.
Do what exactly, Edgar? Do we even have a grasp of what she will do?
Yes. In purifying the Shadow Bane, it will break the cycle of reincarnation. I, Maria and I went to see Akua, who, by the way, more than likely is going to betray us at some point.
He hasn't returned any of my calls or messages, so yes.
It, well, he's, he was going to leave. I've convinced him to stay. For the time being.
I do have a lead on the werewolves.
I... That's great.
That's good.
Not really, but, um... Continue. We can circle back to me.
When we went to see Akua, Akua showed me a vision of what will happen if we fail. If she wears the necklace too long, if she becomes Behesh. The entirety of the city, then the world, falling to their knees, worshiping her as a living god. Her gaze is enough to destroy one of us.
I think during this, um, Imogen, being the wallflower that she is, will kind of look over to Aelyn and take a few steps towards her, and rest her head, her hand on Aelyn's head, and run her thumb over and through her hair, and use premonition, call on Lilith for a vision.
You rolled me three successes with a, four successes with a postal bestial. It's not a bestial?
That's good.
I need to know, if you want to see what Edgar's talking about, or if you want to see currently what Aelyn's dreaming about. Or if you'd like to recall that premonition you had about April.
I'm gonna bring that up, Edgar. But I kind of want you to decide.
You kind of want me to decide?
I do.
Well, let's roll for it, shall we? Well, I rolled that you would see what she's currently thinking about, which isn't as pertinent to what we're talking about. But, um, you see someone who is not Aelyn, but you get the distinct impression that it is Aelyn. It's a, a young woman with strikingly red hair, sh- very sharp green eyes, and she's running through streets that are being burned and invaded. This is somewhere a long time ago. People are riding on horseback, people with swords. You see this very beautiful constructed building, and you recognize it. It's the Hagia Sophia, what it's called now. And, uh, she's running from someone who you also recognize. Uh, she's running from Dragon, who is chasing her down. And she's begging her in a language that you don't know. But you can tell that she's begging her, and she's calling her Stravka. And Stravka, or Dragon, kills her. Drains her dry.
I think, kind of absent-minded, well, not absent-minded, but like, just zoned in to the vision, she would out loud, quietly ask, "Lady, why is Dragon killing her? Aelyn, I'm seeing Aelyn's dream." It's Dragon. Draining her. But not her. A red-haired and green-eyed woman.
She apologized to me for it already. Back on the island, while you were all chasing a ghost.
It did say that, um, they'd already met one. I didn't know what they were talking about at the time.
So did the task get hand?
It was something you should know. I mean, a few nights ago, Tulio and I took it, took time to go to the Botanical Gardens. And this company called Gilgal Industries was showing off... It's not important. What is important is one of their employees, April. She wants to do something to Aelyn.
I'm aware.
Well, she seemed very keen on doing it soon.
She's also a willworker. I know that they've always been after us. Every lifetime I can remember.
It's time to end this vulgar cycle, is what I heard.
Shall we kill her?
Let's.
She's on my shit list.
She manipulated my wife and stole the company that has my name on it.
She followed Imogen and, and in no uncertain words. So I'm in agreement.
However, I would be remiss if I were to say I don't think that's the most important thing on our plate right now. I have access to all of Olivia's funds. I don't need Wait Enterprises at the moment.
This woman is a threat. This woman is targeting Aelyn, who is, in turn, our singer of light. Who in turn is one of our solutions to the Shadow Bane. If we want to eliminate one of our options, then we, yes, we ignore April.
I think this goes beyond Wait Enterprises.
I think you just said there's a whole other willworker involved, and seen what Aelyn can do.
I doubt it's just one. When I saw them before, in visions, they're, they're never alone, this technocracy. They work in teams.
Are they here for the Shadow Bane? Or is their purpose Aelyn?
Aelyn, myself, the Shadow Bane, Lucius, it's all the same problem. We are four things that are one thing.
But then everything else is distraction. We get the Shadow Bane, we kill anyone who comes in our way. Forgive me if I lack nuance, but am I not correct in that assessment?
You have an end goal, Tulio, not a plan, so...
I propose we let the werewolves deal with April. The one that we met at the Botanical Gardens, um, what was his name, darling?
Strider.
Strider seems to have a personal, uh, conflict with this woman.
I don't recognize the name Strider. Heidi and I had our tea that we normally have. There were several werewolves next to Burgain. They ripped apart two camorrahagals. One of them was eaten, like it was nothing.
It sounds like they're on the right track, then.
So the thin bloods in the werewolves.
Are co-mingled?
Yes.
Well, that at least gets us a bead on who could get us in touch with them. That being said. There's one more thing. But I feel like you know. Tulio and I have already discussed it, but I've agreed to embrace Catherine.
You sure that's a good idea?
No.
Ah.
I have a lady or something to say.
Have you informed, have you informed Elsie, the head of the family?
I don't need to. I'm the head of my bloodline.
Of course.
It's making the best of a bad situation and we might have eyes on us. From the mortals. I believe I have all of the evidence scrubbed, but you know how governments are.
Expand Edgar, I don't think that they have.
Yes, you have no scope. Yeah, no, you don't have a point that you have reached.
Catherine and Maria murdered a man uh, in a hotel room that they rented with a stolen credit card from me.
I wasn't called. This is a problem.
You weren't called because there wasn't a body, because Aelyn raised him from the dead.
So Edgar, earlier when I asked if Aelyn had done anything recently.
She had the neck, she, she had the necklace on at the time.
It doesn't, she's.
It does matter.
From herself, even if herself is some arson from centuries ago.
I disagree.
It's because you're trying to separate what you want from what is.
She does have a point Edgar. We had a conversation while you were away about freedom of information and communication. We agreed to keep each other informed and again, while you were away. We'd like to loop you in on that now, if you'd like to agree.
I've always done my best to tell you what I knew to be true and I will continue to do so. I'm not going to waste anyone's time with conjecture.
Yes, but at the earliest convenience Edgar, that's, if I'm not mistaken, I don't speak for you at late. But that is the key issue here.
It was just the other night when I went to pick them up to see Akua.
Do we, I guess it doesn't really matter, but why did they murder somebody?
More fun. As I understand it.
It's a waste of a body and blood.
And it's not in service to the Dark Mother.
I took the blood back from Maria and put it back in his body. I'm sorry if it's caused you all problems. I thought it wouldn't if he was alive.
It's not you who's caused the problem, Aelyn.
I would rather appreciate it though if in the future. The dead remain dead.
She couldn't, that she wasn't herself.
When I wear the necklace, you don't understand. I'm sorry and I don't mean to sound harsh. You don't understand what that power is like.
You don't. You're right.
I could see, I could do anything. I can do anything. I could make Bella exactly how you want her.
I want her just as she is, Aelyn.
Yes, alive. And free of the burden of wanting to be dead. I could do that.
No.
You can say yes and you can say no, and when I wear the necklace, that does not matter. It is what I want.
Tulio will kind of look at Edgar, getting a glimpse of what the hell he was talking about.
Yeah.
Do I need to explain any further?
No.
No.
So. We need to deal with this and we need to deal with it now.
It is at that moment, almost like something out of a zombie movie, Aelyn shrieks as someone s- bangs their hands onto the glass. Um, the exterior of this garden. And you turn around and you see that it is Kenneth.
Instinctually, uh, Imogen would have reached for a dagger.
Mm-hmm. And that is where we are going to take a very quick break. So, welcome back. Where we left off, the Coterie were having a heated discussion inside of the garden at the Bahari Manor, and that's when Kenneth, ala The Walking Dead, banged on the outside of the glass. He comes inside around the back, uh, he looks disheveled and uh, absolutely awful. He also looks starving. Like he hasn't had any time to eat. Like wherever he has been, he has walked straight here, straight there to here. Uh, his clothes are dirty, there's mud on the bottom of his shoes and the bottom of hem of his pants. And he has a phone in his hand that you, none of you recognize to be his phone, and he hands it directly to you Tulio, without saying a word.
What the fuck is this, Kenneth? Where have you been?
It's from Yancy.
Shit. Is that where you've been?
Nope. I've been at Lux.
Elaborate. Quickly.
When shit went down here, I saw someone leaving with my dad. Ozric. Bitch with a fucked up face. Learned later her name was Ariana. I followed her and she did the mind wibbly wobbly on me and forced me to go back with her to Lux. Obviously, I'm not that stealthy. There Lucius and she kept me captive. While he. Yancy, the witch. And that other bitch we brought back. From Humbug, Penelope. Went and go played around in the Shadowlands.
You were with them.
Sure was. That Ariana's um. Well, way scarier than the rest of you. She might even be scarier than Lucius. She took me down to see a white that they're keeping down there in Lux. The white obviously tried to attack me immediately. But she and Ariana are old buddies apparently.
Did you see Hanolore Lamia there?
No.
Did you see where they took Ozric?
No. Ariana didn't let me out of her sight. For four days.
It's that. Did she go to the Shadowlands with you?
No, I didn't, no. They went to the Shadowlands. They were gone all this time until just now. Yancy got me out. He lied to Lucius, told Lucius that I owed him money, got me out of there.
Son of a bitch.
Sounds like we're going to Lux.
You should listen to what's on the tape. Yancy was very clear about that. And literally, I can't do anything until you listen to it. He made sure of it.
You need to feed Will.
I can't do anything until you listen to it. Do you get what I mean?
Girl, reach over and press play on the phone.
Plays on the phone is very clearly an audio recording of someone with a hidden phone on their person. So you hear sort of the ruffle of clothing against the microphone of the phone. And it's Lucius's voice and he's speaking to people. You hear many, many people here, um. You hear Lucius speaking to Penelope. And both of them ha- are having a very heated, uh, almost flirtatious conversation about the least flirtatious topic in the world. Outside of the Hecata death. Specifically, Penelope is asking him what he knows about reincarnating a soul. And Lucius is uh. Laying off random academics, uh, theories about how to do that, academic to Kindred anyway. You hear the Witch of Kudam's voice there as well. On the audio recording, you also hear the voices of the Putanescas, the Milliners, and the Pisannopes. They are referring to Lucius and calling him my lord and my master. Maurizio Putanesca speaks to Lucius about a vial of blood that he has. And he says it belongs to the Singer of Light and they start having a conversation about Aelyn. They seem to be aware of who she is. And Maurizio says he has a vial of her blood, which he does give to Lucius. There's a pause in the audio recording, a crackling before it picks up again. And in this audio recording, Yancy asks Lucius what their, what his plan is. In letting the Witch of Kudam take the quote unquote stone bitch they, or stone broad they pulled out of the Shadowlands. Lucius says that he owes the witch a great deal and therefore he's okay with her taking her as long as the witch tells him what is so special about her. And why he seems, or his soul seems to have a connection to her. And that is the bread and butter of the audio recording that you hear. At the very end is a sticky note that appears on the screen that says, fix this or else with two X's.
The stone woman from the Shadowlands is bashed. They've brought her back here across the veil.
Yeah, I did get a glimpse of her. She was leaving with the witch and Penelope.
I wish that your wife had not unstained that woman.
Maybe we should have just let the thin bloods finish her.
I need wits and awareness from everyone real quick. You've listened to the tape now. Five dice, that's almost all hunger dice for him. Didn't roll that great. I need at least two successes. Three.
How about four?
Four. Imogen, you know what will happen if you don't roll well.
Yeah, I, I roused, I got hunger.
Mm-hmm. Put you a three hunger.
Yes.
And then you hear the voice of Ariana in your mind. Schwesterlein, just eat him. He's so annoying. Did you hear what he said about me? Girl with the fucked up face, what you did to my face. Eat him. Do it now.
Six on a crit.
Okay, so you're not gonna fall under your fun flaw that we homebrew for you. Um, yes, all of you can see that Kenneth is lunging for Aelyn at this very moment. He's hungry, he's also a Hecata.
I'll block with my Gorgon lore sheet.
Yeah.
I.
Push him back.
Mm-hmm.
If help is needed, I'm gonna use my Kindred specialty because what uh, she told Bella earlier was right. Adelaide doesn't need knives.
Help won't be needed, blood will be needed.
We'll call Blood Dolls. That works too. Stay here and I will go fetch Blood Doll.
Mm-hmm. But your ghoul Sabina, she should be close. Not, not Sabina? It doesn't have to be Sabina.
Yeah, no, no, let's not.
Um, one of the new recruits of the Bahari Manor, now that you're starting to bring in new recruits again, is Connie. She's here.
I need you here.
Yes, mother.
We'll take her hand and lead her over to Kenneth.
Kenneth doesn't waste any time and immediately begins drinking.
Don't kill her.
He's going to be leaving her very anemic. Kenneth looks much more relieved now that he's almost killed someone. And he says, oh. I hate this life. I wish you left me dead.
I'm gonna send her off, tell her to get some water and lay down. I'm sure she's not here for this.
Edgar will just stand up and wrap his arms around Kenneth. You worried me.
Ah, good. It was a worrying situation. I worried me too.
Good to see that chip on your shoulder didn't get filled in.
How about we go back there and burn the place to the ground? How about you go back there and burn the place to the ground and I sit in a dark room and uh, attempt to. Not go find someone completely fucked, blitzed out of their mind to eat.
Why don't you? Go see your sister. She's been worried about you.
Ah, sure, why not?
Kenneth. You did good.
I didn't do shit.
Put yourself in a situation where you found yourself in a situation that was disagreeable to you. You kept. Even at the barest of bones, the memory of what happened, you returned to a safe and sound. You did good.
Yancy did good. I got myself kidnapped.
Don't. Don't blame yourself.
I don't blame myself.
You remember the last time we got kidnapped?
Uh, it depends on the context of what you're saying. Last time that I remember having a good time getting kidnapped was when you. Hired those ladies from the Red Light District.
No, not that time. We're, Kenneth, it was like a week ago. Ozric shot me, we packed us into my plane.
I was unconscious for that whole thing.
Oh, come on. You got the, anyway. Alright, we'll deal with Lux. Go see your sister.
He ethered me good, dude. Come on.
Damn. Ether, really?
Yeah, he's like a hundred and fifty years old. Of course he used ether.
He's probably got, that's probably what's fucking you up, is the brain damage.
Whatever. What's fucking me up is that you brought me back from the dead, literally.
Hey, don't put that on me, sport.
I'm not.
You shot them.
I'm gonna go see Bella.
Take um, Edgar, if you'd kindly go with him just to keep an eye on him. Talking to Tiny Edgar.
He throws the papaya into the pile of cannibalistic plants, which they don't appreciate, and he crawls down and chases after Kenneth.
Thank you Edgar.
And I guess it'll be fertilizer.
Does that also count as cannibalism?
Not if they don't eat it.
Which they, which they are not.
Oh, great. I heard this conversation on the internet the other day. It's only cannibalism if you swallow.
Plants don't have mouths. Well, those.
Some do. Edgar just pointing to the flower.
To bring us back on topic. Now we go to the phone.
We should deal with that. We should deal with that now.
Agreed.
I can rally all of my daughters, especially if they know Hanolore is there.
I'm not going to.
We may not have to go that hard.
It makes you think we don't.
Alright, follow me. Olivia owned Lux. Which means I own Lux.
Which means that your company who April was currently occupying owns Lux.
No, Lux was. Specifically in Olivia's portfolio. Had nothing to do with Wait Enterprises. So, now that I am in control of Olivia's assets, I can just have the police do a walkthrough? They'll clear out? We can catch them in the open, not entrenched in a position?
If they don't kill all the police. Penelope is there, Olivia is there, Lucius is there. I'm sorry, not Olivia, apologies. Penelope is there, Lucius is there. Kenneth just said that they all got back in the Shadowlands. This is, the police aren't going to... There are elders there, Edgar.
You think they would risk exposure?
I think they would drain every single one of them dry and let the police come try again and again and again. I don't think they care.
It wouldn't be the police. Does anybody else remember, you know, when we were stuck in our havens?
That's that's what I mean. If we can use mortals to drive them into an open playing field.
And put ourselves in the middle of the Second Inquisition and them.
Not if they clear out.
He's off the hook.
What makes you so sure?
Because there's a response time, Edgar. The first wave of police officers that go through are going to be a response team. There's going to be two, maybe three individuals that go through. They'll be dealt with quickly, swiftly, and without any regard for any masquerade or hiding. And then they have all the chance in the world to leave, to run, and we have no idea where they would go next. Then the second wave of police goes in, who could be Second Inquisition or not, and finds nothing.
If it wasn't tied to Olivia and us to you, it'd be a good plan.
I think it's still a good plan. I think they're more afraid of exposure than you think they are. Oh.
Penelope. Tried to eat your wife and then told us all about her view on things.
I'm not saying Penelope, I'm saying Lucius. Think he's smarter than that.
If Penelope is still there.
The two of you grew up with him. Would he risk exposure?
He wouldn't. It's just why he would kill everyone we sent in on the first wave and then leave.
And he also might not be there. You heard Lisa about being in the Shadowlands.
Going through Lux isn't a plan. Well, going through Lux isn't going to be as simple as clearing it out or assaulting it. It's a trap dungeon, from what I saw. My vision.
Also, quick thing, I'm sorry, you have a sister?
Yeah.
You know what?
I think you were out dealing with something else when she was taunting me.
You saw her at the party, she's the one who had her face.
Caved in.
Caved in.
I didn't see anyone like that.
You did. When you used your abilities to see something that had occurred.
Oh, right. Yeah.
Um, you can make me a wits and insight, Edgar, at the moment.
A truth specialty?
Yeah.
And my guess also is that she's one of our biggest threats, especially with what Kenneth said. I don't know how much of a person is left in your sister, Imogen.
Not a lot.
When every time Ariana's face is mentioned, Imogen seems to look away. Something about whatever is wrong with her face, her fucked-up face, as I said, concaved-in head and some of the eyes peeled back like this. Imogen seems to have an issue talking about it.
Edgar won't say anything. Alright. So, we're walking into a trap.
Literally.
So we're gonna have to make a plan as we go? Is that what you're trying to tell me right now? Or I'm just not sure what the angle is here.
We don't have to walk into anything. We can wait, we can contact the werewolves, see if we can get them to deal with it.
Tulio, I love you. Our mother, my mother, it seems had a change in curriculum between the two of us. You can't keep passing things off and making it someone else's problem.
What if they helped us? What if we all did it in one group effort? If we point them in the direction of the man who wants the Shadow Bane, that's what they want, deal with the problem.
No, they want the Shadow Bane.
The werewolves?
Yeah.
And the werewolves are working with the Thin Bloods. We get the Thin Bloods and the werewolves together on this?
That's the entire might of the Bahorn?
Let's focus, let's focus on Yancy's message. Said fix this now. I don't want to figure out what the order else is. So what are we going to do now? I'll go by myself if I have to. I'm really not keen on fighting a white on my own. I'll do it.
I'll die foolishly, more foolishly than you lived, Edgar. No, you want action, you want to handle this yourself, then let's be smart about it. Imogen's idea of a united front is the best bet of what we have here.
We don't have time to unite. We have to move now.
We move now, we move immediately, and we move into a trap, Edgar.
I need to start off with like steps here for me, at least how I operate. We say fix this now, what are we fixing? We need to get to our root cause.
Lucius.
I, well, I assume from the previous conversations we've had with Yancy, it's the Shadow Bane.
Lucius's, rather Yancy's immediate concern seems to be Lucius's goals with the Shadow Bane. But Lucius can't, he's not an immediate threat, as insane as that sounds. We do have time. We do have a moment. We have something he doesn't have yet. We have information.
Dragon's concern. That's Yancy's concern, Dragon. And what Lucius is going to do. Lucius is going to have to reach out to Dragon, who is napping. Which means things are getting worse. It's not Lucius causing it, we just...
I, I'm going to speak with Aelyn.
We can wait in the tiny room.
Yeah, let's follow me.
Imogen, I need to ask if you're gonna use sight and senses. Problem is, if Edgar speaks a different language that you don't know, I need to know.
Yeah. No. Cause I actually had my own thing I wanted to talk about, this too, there.
Sure. Aelyn is trying to stay awake, she keeps nodding off, she's sipping on the turmeric tea, it's getting cold.
I know you're tired.
Yes.
But are you tired of this? Of this cycle?
What do you mean?
I mean, what if this is the last time?
It seems like it might be, doesn't it, sometimes?
I can't trust them to act. You and I know it's at stake, and we've tried to make them understand, and they can't.
What do you want me to do, Edgar?
I think we have to do it. The two of us. We have to go to the Shadow Bane and purify it.
I can't, wearing the necklace. You know what will happen. And if I do it without the necklace, I'm not strong enough, I can tell you that right now, I will die before I can purify it.
I know.
You said, you're all talking so fast, hard to keep up. You said Behsh is here.
Yes.
In Berlin.
The Witch of Kudam has her.
Destroy her? Well, then stop it.
I doubt it. But it's possible. This is all far beyond my mystical purview. What do you think?
I think there's only one person in Berlin we could get answers from. But she won't like it.
I think it's Ebro.
Yes. But I know she has minions. I know she must have many. There's a man running Wait Enterprises right now while she's at Gilgal Industries. I bet he knows.
Is he cold?
I don't know. I try, without the necklace, it's hard to reach beyond to see. I think it's Max, or maybe Rex. Or maybe that's both wrong.
I'll pay my company a visit.
I think that's the best way to know if I am dying or not. For if I'm dying just to be reborn, it is less of a hard decision to make.
You say that like you don't know what that does to me.
No, I know. I know. But you're stronger every time, every reincarnation. Look at how far Gaia lasted without Darius. Over twenty years.
And yet, we have to do something. And if going to Wait, going to the office is what you think is best, I'll have a car come and pick you up and take you home. And I'll go.
If you think that's best, Edgar, for me to be alone.
I don't want to be separated from you. But I don't trust taking you there. So I don't know, maybe you stay here with Bella.
I'll do whatever you think is best. I have not the strength to do anything else.
Alright.
And I'm afraid, Edgar, I might be dying again.
I am as well.
I think the necklace is a, um, once I put it on, I think that was a binding contract or something.
It may not be, Arrow. We have to find a way to set your spark to blaze.
As long as I am connected, we are connected to Behsh. You will only lead down one road, Edgar.
And if that is the road we have to walk, then I would be glad to worship you.
Don't say that.
Said it, I meant it.
Um, I'll lay down. Wait for you to come back.
We'll just wait here for them to come back and and then girl, sit down and put her head in his lap and just stroke her hair.
She does, almost immediately, as soon as you lay her head down in your lap, she does start falling asleep again. And you can feel that she's not as warm as she should be. It's all those same symptoms slowly, ever so slowly coming back to her body. As if taking off the necklace is returning her to exactly the state that she was in before she put it on that night when Carla died. Remove outside, just outside here. Imogen and Tulio, you wanted to have a conversation, is that correct?
Yes, and Adelaide, of course.
Who sent me a message?
It was me.
You can? We'll deal with that just as soon as they have that conversation.
So as we're walking out, kind of lead us to the drawing room. And start with a if we tell them about Hannah Laurie, there will be nothing that I can do to stop them from storming the castle.
No. That was our mother for a very long time. And, um, I don't want unnecessary death.
We die for our family. It's what we do.
Unnecessary death is the important part. We all died for our family at least once. No need to waste it.
They doubt me. And I can't say that I blame them.
I can.
I've been taking any action, not against Sahira, not against Lucius. Not against Ariana.
You defended them. You defended this family. You fought alongside Hannah Laurie. What reason could they possibly have to doubt you?
Cause we're just reacting, not acting. Not acting on what we know, the opportunities we have.
We don't have any opportunities. We are forced into a position where we have to react. Acting without the information, acting without, what Edgar is proposing, storming Lux with just us, not assembling a group. Acting without the information, acting without... Edgar is proposing storming Lux Gud, with just us, not assembling a group, it's not a plan. It's a suicide mission. Gathering our allies, taking our time, assessing the inform-
That headphone.
Womp womp.
Okay.
Assessing our information, weighing our advantages. This is wise. Rushing foolhardy into conflict, yes, it's action, but it's foolish. If any of them want to be foolish, give them the address for Lux.
I think the werewolves could be potential allies, but that would take time.
Time that we still have.
Speaking of werewolves, Adelaide, you shoot off that text to Tito's, who does respond. And he says, "Granata says the wolves aren't available." "And she would also like to know how you know about them."
That alley sees a lot of action.
Not available, busy.
Granata available?
Witch got in a new shipment of something exciting. All of her thin bloods are inside.
Adelaide's gonna actually show that message. Shit. We may not have an option, though.
Inside the garden, where Edgar is sitting with Aelyn, Aelyn has fallen asleep in his lap. You're gonna hear Aelyn murmuring now, and of course Edgar, you hear it as well, you're very close to her. She's speaking in a British accent. Uh, she's talking out loud to herself, uh, in her sleep, and she's calling out for someone named Vivian, uh, declaring her love for someone named Vivian. Um, and, uh, she's getting quite animated, she's almost kicking in her sleep, in your lap. All of you can hear this, it's almost at the point of yelling.
Another dream. That pulled to something that was once her. That is also concerning in the recording.
Yes.
That is... I don't know what would happen if we put Lucius and Aelyn in our room together.
Only one way to find out.
He would kill her.
What if she had the necklace on?
Edgar, do you do anything to stop Aelyn? She's squirming around on your lap.
I'll just keep running his hands through her hair, just till I wake up, stay off.
Getting harder to wake her up, it's not working this time.
Put the necklace on her.
You're gonna put the necklace on her? Alright. You put the necklace on her, and she sits upright. She's no longer sleepy, she's no longer dreaming. A flush comes to her cheeks, and she makes a deep, deep sigh as... She says, "Why did you do that, Edgar?"
"We can't keep doing this."
"It hasn't even been twenty-four hours. You have to be stronger than this."
"I'm not going to sit here and watch you die."
"Then lock me up."
"We have the room in the apartment." "If you don't want it to be there, it won't be."
"You need to do something now, figure out what we're doing about the Shadow Bane. Because I will go to the island and destroy it right now, I want to, desperately so. And then it will be goodbye forever." "Make a decision now, or I will."
"Let me speak with the others. And I'll make a decision. Whether it ends up being just you and I, or all of us. You have my word."
"Don't leave me alone too long."
"I don't plan on leaving you alone at all. Come with me."
She does.
"We need to do something now." "I wish, let me be very clear. If the decision is indecision, Aelyn and I will go to Peacock Island, and we will deal with the Shadow Bane tonight."
"What about Dragon?"
"Don't think it'll be a problem."
"Dragon is, uh, taking a voluntary dirt nap."
Ah.
She's horrid.
"And there's only so much time that Yancy can buy for us."
"That's true."
"He already bought us so much, and got Kenneth back."
"And do you think he'll appreciate storming the island?"
"I don't think I'll be around to deal with it."
"We will, Edgar."
"Yes. Yes, you will. So I think we should go see April. She's the only one who knows more about what's going on than Aelyn and I."
"But she wants Aelyn."
"People want a lot of things. They rarely ever get them."
"Do we see her wearing the necklace? And what do you want, Aelyn?"
"It is not a question to ask me, Adelaide, when I'm wearing this necklace."
"No, it isn't. And as that you're wearing it, we have very little time."
"You always had very little time."
"You've had a lot of time with Aelyn."
"And look what I've made of it. Look what we've all made of it. We've sat here. We've watched, we've been afraid to take risks, we've been afraid to take responsibility. And we've sat, and we've squandered."
"Yes."
"So we get all the rest of the information we can from April. And then we make a fucking plan to deal with the actual fucking problem." "You can, mate."
"This is a question, Edgar."
"You're, you're all afraid to do as you like. I'm sorry I roped you into all this. When I should have just dealt with this on my own, because it's my responsibility."
"Can you make me a stamina and a cult roll, Edgar?"
"We need to get a hold of Yancy."
"Uh, with fortitude?"
Nope. Okay. I'll let you use fortitude, because you're gonna need it.
Six with the crit.
Tell me if you beat twelve, okay. Um, twelve successes. Aelyn pushes you up against the wall with more force than she should be able to as a person. Um, so much so that unfortunately, Imogen, she cracks the lovely, uh, paneling of this room. Uh, and she holds you up above her. Aelyn is short, you are what, six foot three? Aelyn is five foot two on a good day, but she extends her own body upwards to hold you up above her. And she says, "Edgar, I'm tired of you being a martyr. I have told you again and again for you to lean on your family, and all that I see from you is whining and fear, and pointing fingers at yourself and at others. I think I should take care of the Shadow Bane on my own as I should have always done. What say you now?"
Edgar will look at Tulio.
"Don't stake me this time."
And I'll bite her. Bite into her neck. But she's wearing the necklace this time, in her free mind. Make me another stamina and a cult roll.
Adelaide's making sure that the noise isn't drawing in any of the Bahari.
I need to know if anyone is going for the necklace.
Hi!
I need whoever's going for the necklace, dexterity and athletics rolls. At the moment, I'm sitting at one, two, three critical successes.
I can't beat that, I'm still gonna try.
No, this is for Edgar.
Oh, okay, good, good. It's not good, everything's bad.
How many, Edgar?
Not enough.
How many?
Uh... Eight with a crit.
Okay, I have thirteen. Did I spend a point of wall power? I was sitting at ten, I could have just left it at ten. My dex athletics, what did you roll?
Five.
Eight with a crit.
What about you, Imogen?
Uh, can I add prowess to this?
Yeah!
Okay. Ten with two crits.
Perfect. So Imogen's gonna be the winner here. So, here's what happens. Edgar, you go in to bite her, but you're dealing with whatever Aelyn is. Now, she's something other than a mage at the moment, but she's just as powerful, if not more so, than the average. And as you go in to bite her, she, with the other hand, the one that's not holding you up above her, she puts it over your mouth and takes your mouth away. So that you cannot speak and have no mouth. And as she does that, she turns your mouth around and holds it, and speaks to you through your own mouth with your own words. And she says something very strange, something that, words that you've never cobbled together. But she says, "It was never meant to be this way. Our connection was never meant to be love." And that is when Tulio and Imogen and Adelaide all race for the necklace around Aelyn's neck. Adelaide and Tulio, you now are too short to even reach Aelyn, as she has elongated herself. And Imogen, however, parkours up the side of the wall very handily, and rips the necklace off of Aelyn. As that happens, your mouth is restored, and Aelyn falls to the ground, and she is going to injure herself. She's gonna take two points of superficial damage.
I was gonna say Adelaide would try and catch Aelyn.
You can? I will only give her one point of superficial damage. Does anyone try and catch Edgar?
No.
I volunteer.
Tulio, make sure that you don't go plummeting to the ground, as she had lifted you as high as she could all the way up to the ceiling.
So we take her to Peacock Island.
I don't see an alternative.
And Adelaide will start getting uh, Aelyn situated, so that we can take her out to the car.
Get your hands off of her.
Aelyn crawls over to you, Edgar, and throws her arms around you, she has started to sob. And she says, "Edgar, I'm sorry. That wasn't me, I don't know what that was."
I know. I, I know.
I don't want to hurt you.
I don't think we have a choice. We go and see April. We get what information we can. And we make a plan.
Going to see April is going to be wasting time.
And you're the fucking authority. With what assuredness do you speak, Adelaide?
I just witnessed something that is going to happen again, and again, and again, that should not have happened in the first place.
Who are you to deny our existence?
You're fucking family, Edgar.
I'm going to take my wife home. I'm going to lock her away like she's a prisoner. And then we're going to go see April.
You walk your weakened wife into the arms of someone who is actively tracking her, actively wants to possess her and use her.
Imogen, intelligence and a cult.
Eight with a crit.
You remember April telling you that she can help Edgar. She said, and I quote, "Tell Edgar I can help him and save the woman he loves," end quote. You also could determine, just from the vision that you saw, ending the vulgar cycle. You've heard it now enough, that Edgar and Aelyn have lived multiple lives together. You think, whether this will be good for Aelyn or not, uh, that April might actually have a solution. That what April wants to do might actually help. You don't think she wants to possess her. You think she wants to stop the reincarnation. Whether that's a negative or a positive, there's no way for you to know, but at the very least, it's there. That is information Edgar does not have.
She said she wants to help you, Edgar. She said she wants to help you, Edgar. I don't know what that means. I don't know what help means to her, besides ending the cycle.
I intend to find out.
Okay.
I'm going to take Aelyn home. Tomorrow night, meet me at the office. We'll all have a nice civil chat with April. And then we'll make a plan. And then we'll deal with the Shadow Bane. Adelaide, please give Kasim my regards.
Edgar will scoop up Aelyn and walk to the car.
Alright. Tulio, I imagine you're staying here. Imogen, you live here, so I imagine you're staying here.
Yeah.
Adelaide, are you also staying here tonight?
No.
Where are you going?
Home.
Are you letting Kasim and Bela know?
She's, she's gonna take him to go for a small drive.
Tulio would like to stop Adelaide and talk to her. It doesn't need to be
Would you like to go on a drive with Adelaide?
Actually, that's very fitting, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Sure, can I ask you where you're driving to?
Um, Adelaide's driving down a couple of streets looking for people so that if needed, she can get a good beat on victims. And also check out near Burgain, since all of the thin bloods are part of her plan.
Sure. Imogen, would you like to go with them, or do you have something else you'd like to do?
Uh, I got nothing else.
Sure. Let's do that. Then we'll get to Edgar going home with Aelyn. If there's any final conversation we want to have there. So you inform Tulio and Imogen that you need to go for a ride, clear your head and start heading towards Burgain, is that correct?
Uh huh.
May have that conversation now.
Adelaide didn't want to, um, interrupt your, uh, me time. But I'm, uh, been a bit of a hypocrite. And it's only just now sparked, uh, my realization. We agreed on communication, and a long time ago, you and I took a very similar drive.
Yes.
I told you I had a goal, and I think it's obvious now that I'm no longer bonded to Olivia. But I need you to understand when exactly that happened. I just didn't have the time or the... I see the look on your face, but this is important to me. I promised you. And I broke that promise, and I'm sorry. I told you I would let you know, and I didn't uphold that.
I see. Actually, no, I don't, um... Where's your hypocrisy?
I told Edgar tonight, communication at the earliest convenience. It's been some time since this happened. Aelyn did it. Aelyn broke the connection. We were entrenched in many other different things, but I should have told you I should have found a moment, even if it was just in passing.
We have been rather preoccupied, and amongst company that it is not a good idea to acknowledge those things. You're right, though. I accept your apology.
It was important to me that I told you, even if it was late. I'm sorry.
I can't eat people anymore?
I'm sorry to hear that.
Unless they're really, really fresh. And it takes more of them. I might not be the safest to be around when hungry.
I understand.
I found a solution? So Kasim will be around more?
I see.
I don't, but that's what she wished you indulge. Thank you.
Was there anything else, or?
I confess to both of you, if we are going to go see April, I have to prepare something terrible. If April is preoccupied or becomes a threat, I need some manner of protection, some sort, something. And I might not be able to do anything against her. This might not work at all, but I'd like a contingency. I need to kill an innocent, someone who is guaranteed innocent. I need six points of their blood, and I'm going to prepare that tonight.
This isn't me time? I also need the blood of the innocent for what I do. Do you understand the amount of bodies that have been in this trunk while we've been riding around? I don't do things for me. It's a waste of time.
This family is fucked up.
As you say that, you approach Burgain, approach the alleyway, the tunnel where those thin bloods are. You start slowly cruising to the point where you can't drive here anymore. It's walking only. Someone wraps on your window, and you notice that it is Tito's.
We're all so on business.
And Adelaide's gonna roll down the window.
Hello, Tito's.
Found a wolf for you.
Good, good. How did your, um, experiment work out?
Fine. You want to talk to the wolf or not?
Yes.
It's down your favorite alley.
God. That alley is accursed anyway. Thank you, Tito's.
He heads back to the tunnel. Do you go alone?
Hell no.
Adelaide's gonna, like, put the keys on the center console, like she's gonna leave by herself.
Oh, absolutely not. I'll get out of the car.
Tulio?
Swim. Yeah, no, going with Adelaide, absolutely not. We're not gonna go see a werewolf in the middle of an alleyway alone. Are you fucking high?
Sometimes, um...
Turn left down the alley. Again, you're just on the side of Burgain. This is where it happened, Adelaide. This is where those two Camerolegals were killed. One ripped apart.
And eaten.
And one eaten.
Eaten.
And the person who's standing down the alley is, uh, someone who, well, calling him muscular would be doing him a disservice. Uh, he practically looks like something out of an action movie, like out of, uh, those spray painted on abs in 300. He's wearing a very tight white shirt. He has, uh, thick black hair, very piercing blue eyes. He stands about six foot five, six foot six. And, uh, all of your beasts recoil at just the presence of him. This isn't like with Strider. This is a werewolf. No question.
Hello.
I heard you needed a wolf.
I heard the wolves were looking for something. And it would be in our best interest to speak of it.
Do you have information about it, or not?
I do.
I'll take your information.
What do we call you? The last, what was the last one's name?
Strider.
Strider.
He rolls his eyes. You can you can call me Marcel.
We're looking for something called the Shadow Bane. One of our own was causing an issue. And it's been said that you like to kill our kind.
I find it particularly boring. You are so easy to kill. The Shadow Bane, where is it?
Somewhere in Berlin.
Yes, very good. Where is it?
I'm gonna look at Imogen and Tulio. If there's no hesitation, no books, we're, we're just gonna say it.
Um, fuck.
Insight.
Yeah, can we?
Sure. What's an insight? What is it that you wanna insight?
Um, so Strider was very just wasn't cool about it, but he was upfront and amiable.
Mm-hmm. You didn't feel rage boiling off of him?
Right.
This feels like you're standing next to a volcano.
Right, 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 right. I'm gonna, I wanna assess, like...
Why don't you access premonition?
What?
Premonition.
Oh, yeah, I'll do that, yeah. I can do that, sure.
Make me a rouse check, resolve an auspex.
I am gonna do, um...
I've seen this movie before.
Fatal flaw, though.
Sure.
Because I'm curious about this individual, and about, you know, whatever the fuck these things are, that scared Heidi.
Mm-hmm. Fatal flaw for a physical or?
Yes.
Mental.
Mental, there's something going on there that Adelaide doesn't wanna look at.
Physical, you gotta pick one, though. Physical or mental?
Physical, like, that thing's gonna be huge, and it grows hair and claws, so physical is what she's going for, like, what could take this?
That is what Adelaide would be going for, sure.
Yep, it would be...
Mm-hmm. What did you roll, Imogen?
Fine.
Call upon the Dark Mother, and, um, you get an image, or more than an image, you get a little movie in your brain, where you see this person, Marcel. You see him in a room with April. Uh, they seem very close, very connected, uh, so much so that they begin fornicating in your little mind movie. And that is what the Dark Mother shows you.
Better. Um, when Adelaide looks to Imogen, Imogen, she's not gonna shake her head. She's going to convey with her eyes, "I don't trust this person."
Adelaide, what did you roll fatal flaw?
Five.
Boy, do you not get a whole lot out of that? Not a whole lot can kill this guy, actually. You think maybe if you chopped his head off? Or hit him with silver? Other, maybe fire? Other than that, he's almost an unkillable machine.
Papa was right.
Not at the moment. He just looks like a regular dude. Like, he spends, like, he spends day in and day out at the gym, but he's like a regular dude. I don't have, I mean, I'm not stuck to a day-night cycle like the rest of you, but I don't have all night. Where is the Shadow Bane? Final time, I will ask.
It's in Berlin. We know that some kindred has it, um, and that he's really close to getting it. Sorry, Lucius.
Is kindred what you call yourselves?
Yes.
Sure.
Just as a note, honey, I feel like I should just make this known. Hand is in my pocket and just ready to crack the charcoal, just, just for name of the father, just in case, as a contingency. I'm not panicking, you're panicking.
Does Lucius have a last name?
Giovanni.
Oh.
He, he lives in Lux.
Yeah, I know all about him. He doesn't have it.
Good.
You've been an absolute waste of my time.
We just thought that you were interested in the Shadow Bane from the last time.
You have fifteen seconds to get out of my alley.
Your alley. I thought this belonged to the witch.
Three.
I'm gonna grab, I'm gonna kind of grab both their wrists, get ready to sorely...
Yeah.
He just keeps counting, waiting for you to make a move.
Our urges backwards, I don't like this.
We're going. It's rage, and we're gonna invest in a silver axe that has a contained container on the inside.
Sure.
Sure, we got a silver weapon in the manor somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah. Those werewolves actually can't be trusted, probably. Um... Before we end our scene, Edgar, you're driving back with Aelyn. She's very upset at what she did. She's very sorrowful. She keeps apologizing to you. She's also upset with herself.
I'm going to fix this.
What if Imogen is right? What if April just wants to help?
I intend to find out.
Edgar, maybe it would be easier if I just, you know, took, what is the phrase? Took a short, a long walk off of a short pier? Started again.
How am I, how was that supposed to make me feel?
I don't know. You have immortality. It's not the same as with Gael. Lucius has a part of your soul. Maybe it won't be so despairing. You can make it your strong.
I just have one question, Aelyn. Do you want to die as the woman you are, or what that necklace will make you? It's all I need to know. Because we all die. I just need to know who you want to be.
I want to be the woman that she fell in love with. I've never wanted to be anyone else. And I don't want to be whatever Behesht has become. She's not that girl at the well anymore.
I don't think we have the choice anymore. I think it's time that we both accepted the truth. I will love you every moment until the last.
I won't become her, Edgar. Keep that necklace away from me.
You have my word.
You have my word. I would understand if you wanted to just sleep and dream.
Edgar, all I dream of is my death. Or yours. Or her.
I could give you the blood.
It doesn't affect me.
I mean, pain you fully and then give you the blood.
I don't know if it would work. Can, what happens when you make a vampire with no soul?
Starting to believe that we're all relatively soulless.
No. You have a soul. I've always seen it. All of you do. Lucius could not have consumed Gaia if he did not have a soul.
Just tired. Got a bit of the morbs.
Do you remember when we left Berlin? We're still wearing the necklace and everything was easier.
So we leave?
Doesn't solve the problem of the Shadow Bane. And that won't stop April either.
I've been trying to be someone I've not for a very long time. Been trying to be the responsible brother. The dutiful son. The sympathetic cousin. I'm not any of those fucking things, Aelyn. I don't give a fuck about any of them. You were the first thing I've ever really cared about and I've tried, you know, even the children, I've, I built it up. I surrounded this, that I was supposed to love them with ceremony and tradition. I'm their godfather. That should mean something. I don't care. They're slowly being groomed into monsters by the fucking rest of them. There's no world to leave the children to anymore. It just gets fucking worse. We make the world worse by being in it. And yet we just make more. We make a big deal out of, oh, who embraces who and all the blood gets passed down to here, there, everywhere. It's all just smoke and mirrors, distractions, self-involvement. I fucking hate them. And I've tried to lead by example. And it doesn't get me anywhere.
Aelyn repeats what you said. There's no world to leave the children? Where is that necklace on your person?
In, I, I don't, I don't have it.
Ah.
Imogen has it.
Imogen has it.
Yeah.
Imogen. Stamina in a cult, this should be a better role for you.
Yeah. Are we still on the same scene?
No, but I'll allow it.
Aw, thanks.
This car ride's gonna get weird.
This is gonna get something. Seven with a crit.
Nine with a crit? As you say that, and Aelyn is watching the person that she fell in love with talk about how he doesn't care about anything but her and that he doesn't care about Bella and his Kenneth and his family and it's, you can see in her eyes, it's breaking her heart. She feels responsible somehow. And she holds her hand up like this and you see that, you remember it from Darius, you saw in your vision, that sickly burnout happening across her chest. She holds her hand out. And the necklace leaves wherever it is on Imogen's person and materializes in her hand. And she starts coughing, retching. And she holds it to herself. And she says, "Then I will make a better world for you Edgar." And that is where we will end. Our special session number two, terrifying play for this evening. Thank you, everyone.